That item?
Yeah.
Up to the...
Yeah, which one?
The one they just sent us, I think it's thirteen. He gave you an email about it.
Just your name. Yeah, hold on.
It appears we're live.
All right, seven o'clock, we're waiting for Mark. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia is calling in shortly here. One second.
That's fine, yeah. We're still waiting for a Mark show. Thank you.
Mayor, meeting is live now.
All right, so we're ready to go. Is Councilmember Monica Garcia on board? All righty, so first of all, I want to say good evening to everyone. The, this point I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council meeting along with the Housing Authority and the Finance Authority. So today is April the fifteenth, twenty twenty, and the time is seven o'clock. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and conduct the, conduct the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to stand, Councilmember, excuse me, City Clerk and I are at the chamber. So at this point, we're going to face the flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty, thank you very, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. So at this point, I will ask the City Clerk, Ms. Jean Emma Yala, to take roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? I think we lost him on the table.
Okay, present, present.
He's present, okay.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Council Monica, Councilmember Monica Garcia? Should be with us shortly.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez?
Present.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Also, we have with us, we have our City Treasurer, Ms. Maria Contreras, she is on my phone. She was having problems dialing in, so she's...
Mayor, are you going to do an invocation?
You go ahead, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco will go ahead.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I'm here.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. All right, so at this point, we'll have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco leading us in a vocation.
Heavenly Father, watch over our city, our nation, our country. Protect our health workers, our firefighters, our police officers, and all those that are helping us in this time of need. And please help all of us make the right decisions for our city. Amen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All righty, so at this point, we've taken the roll call. City Clerk, do we get any messages from anyone outside under the three-minute communication?
We have two, Mayor, but they still have time, so if anybody comes in before the seven-ten, we'll add them after. Is that fine?
Okay, so at this point, we'll go ahead and, she says there may be two, so we'll add them at the end of the meeting then. All right, all right, thank you, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we don't have any presentations, so we're going to go into the consent calendar. However, the City Clerk did tell me that there was an item, I believe, item thirteen, we were going to be pulling. Is that an, let me, or that's not under consent calendar, so.
Mayor, if I could, this is Shannon Yahtzee.
Yes, sir.
We do have, at the last minute, item thirteen was changed to a public hearing, and that was done with a five-day notice as authorized by HUD. So we would ask for the council to vote to move that from report of officers to public hearings. And then, we also have a subsequent item to be added to the meeting, and I sent this out to everybody, and that is, we're asking for the ratification of the, by the City Council, of the vital medical LLC agreement for the drive-through testing. So those are two additions or changes to the agenda.
I think, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, Mayor, we need a motion to add that to the agenda and then a motion to ratify it.
Right, so let's...
And we'll also need a motion to change the report of officers to a public hearing.
Can we go ahead and include all three at one time? For a motion?
That would be up to the attorney. I think you have to motion to add it and then...
Okay, then at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to add. So at this point, I'm going to have, the City Clerk will need to take everyone's vote. So at this point, City Clerk, go ahead.
You're, I'm sorry, you're adding a motion to add what right now, Mayor?
We're...
Item thirteen?
Item thirteen.
To a public hearing?
To change it to a public hearing, you mean?
Yes, 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 we're going to add it as a public, which is a fiscal year 2019, 2020, Community Development Black Grant Coronavirus, CDDP, that's a funding used for the COVID-19. Okay, so that, that is the motion to add as a public hearing.
And can we still make requests for changes on that once we discuss it?
Yes, we could bring it up once it's all passed, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so at this point, the City Clerk will go ahead and, I made a motion, so the City Clerk will take the roll call. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And Mr. Mayor, this takes a four-fifths vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Legal Council. Go ahead, so it's been seconded by Alejandra Avila. At this point, City Clerk?
Thank you. Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five-zero. Now, the other motion that we're making is...
Yes, Mayor, that would be asking for a motion to add the ratification of the vital medical LLC agreement for drive-through testing to the agenda. And once that's passed, then we would ask for a motion to ratify that agreement.
All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor, Mr. Hernandez, City Clerk?
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Yes, sorry.
Member Monica Garcia?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes, yes, the motion to pass now. At this point, we're going to go ahead and motion to pass. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass. Is there a second?
What item is that, Mr. Mayor? Are you taking thirteen now?
This is to pass the, the vital, the vital, what is it, vital medical service?
Vital medical services.
Yes, exactly.
This is, yes, Robert, this is for the ratification of that agreement that they just added to the agenda.
Okay, so you're voting on item number thirteen?
That is correct.
Oh, no.
No, no, we did that one already. We did that one.
They're voting on the subsequent item that was just added on the agenda, which is the ratification of the vital medical LLC agreement for drive-through testing.
For the record, that's item number fourteen now.
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, so there's a motion, and then we're seconding it?
Yes.
Who was, who was the second? Vice Mayor? Okay, Vice Mayor, and then roll call.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
All right, so the motion passes five-zero. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and go back to the consent counter. The council members wishing to pull any items. So we have actually the total of eleven because we added the, am I correct on that, Shannon? It would be eleven? Oh, no, 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 tens. Go back. Sorry about that.
Correct, that would be ten.
Yeah, would be ten.
Eleven is a public hearing, Mayor.
Yes, yes, sorry about that, yes. So at this point...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number, item number five.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez is the Vice Mayor's.
We're allowed to pull number item eight.
Six and seven.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, six and seven by Alejandra, okay. And then, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Item eight.
Item eight, all righty. Okay, so we'll go to item five, which is by Vice Mayor Hernandez, which is emergency order mandating face masks used by all workers and customers in Ballpark for worker protection. Councilmember, Vice Mayor, yes, sir?
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for everyone's initiative and effort to put this on the item for today and also to make sure that our employees and residents have the fullest amount of protection while they're out doing and conducting essential services. I would like to add just one additional language here to what would be item number seven on the back page, and that is to read the following. For all big stores, including but not limited to Target, Walmart, grocery stores, and any other big locations open to the public, must limit the number of Patreons allowed in the store to a number that will allow for the state and city mandate distancing, excuse me, distancing of six feet per person. The city strongly recommends that big box stores immediately reduce its Patreons to eighty percent of its normal Patriot visits at any one time. This will allow for adequate social distancing. The number is just a recommendation, but again, this is something that would certainly provide a little bit more protection for our residents while they're shopping, not only inside the store, but also provide a little bit more comfort for those that are waiting to go to these essential businesses. That is my motion.
And Council, Vice Mayor Hernandez, can I have a point of clarification, please?
Yes, sir.
And the recommendation that you mentioned, the number, the eighty percent, that's just a recommendation, but the mandate that you, that all big locations open to the public not allow more people than in the store that would, that would allow for the mandated social distancing, that's mandatory, that's not a recommendation, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. There's a motion by, by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council, was that Councilmember?
Yes.
Thank you. Any objections? See you in a move. All right, item six requested by Councilmember Alejandra, which is the second reading of ordinance number fourteen-five-two to amend the section thirty-three-point-zero-five of the City Ballpark Municipal Code to include an Assistant Chief of Police position to the list of manager's positions identified in subsection B-two. So this is the second hearing. Yes, Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Yes, I'm here, sorry, I was muted.
That's fine, that's fine.
Six and seven kind of go hand in hand, so it's okay if I just discuss both at the same time, Mayor?
That's fine.
Okay.
Let me read off seven, so everyone will know.
Yes, please.
Is the adoption of Resolution Number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-three to add update to the City of Ballpark's job classification plan by adding a new position of Assistant Chief of Police and the adoption of Resolution Number twenty-twenty dash zero-one-four to amend the City of Ballpark's pay schedule in accordance with the CalPERS established guidelines. So at this point, Councilmember Avila wishes to go ahead and amend on both of them at the same time. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm looking at the report. This was, this is as a second reading, as we all know, and at the first reading, I was very concerned because I feel that we're not being transparent. We didn't have time for, for questions and answers. And because of what the city and the whole country is going through, we really didn't have time for the public to come up and ask questions and get clarification. Now, I see that, you know, the chief is offering a great reduction in our budget for our police department, which is great. I definitely appreciate that, but I have some questions. So I know if we, we were to vote yes on this for an Assistant Chief of Police, and this is for the chief, right now we have two captain positions, correct? That we have to budget for. Chief?
That is correct.
And so bringing in the Assistant Chief of Police, that would, we would get rid of the two captains, and that would only leave us the Assistant Chief to take that place.
Essentially, what we'll do is the one captain will fund the Assistant Chief. The other captain, what we'll do is turn that into a commander and save a little bit money there.
And if, if I could comment a little further on that, so there are currently two captain positions budgeted. One is vacant.
Right.
And so that vacant position on its own would be able to fund the Assistant Chief position. Most likely, the other captain position would be kept through the reorganization and eventually phased out over time.
Okay, so I know you're saying the captain position will, will fund the Assistant Chief, but looking at, at the, at the pay schedule here, the captain does not make as much as what we're putting down that the Assistant Chief of Police would make. For example, I'm going all the way back to, let's say we were to start at step seven, which we're not, of course. The captain is at a hundred and sixty-seven and change to stage seven, and for the Assistant Chief, it's at a hundred and eighty-two. So there is a difference in pay there, so we would have to actually bring some more money into that to be able to fund the Assistant Chief. Now, you're telling me the other captain position, that's gonna help fund our commanders. Now, I see that we're gonna have one, two, three, four, five commanders in place. I don't recall seeing what, what it's gonna cost to have each commander in place. Where are we getting this, this commanders? Are we gonna have to fly the positions? Or is somebody going to test for it? How is that going to work? Because I'm not very clear on that. I also want to know what's going to happen to the lieutenants that are already in place. I know the sergeants will still be in place, and then I see a corporal position also. How are all these being put in place? Are we re-advertising? How is all that working? Because again, I didn't have time to ask questions to get clarification.
So we can answer some of those questions, although tonight, we probably can't answer all of those questions because really, the rest of the reorganization, that includes the commanders and the captains and any other positions, are really not being presented or approved tonight. Those will come back at a later meeting, probably in two weeks. So really, the only thing we're approving tonight is the Assistant Chief position. What you don't see on that pay scale is that captains get other benefits, including longevity pay and education pay. So a top-level captain with all of those benefits is making almost identical to what a top-level Assistant Chief would make. So in fact, actually, we're predicting no cost to the city, but in reality, if we bring an Assistant Chief in at the lower range, we're probably gonna have some savings because we were currently budgeting for captains near the top of the range.
Okay, so that's the case. So how do I know that once we continue this reorganization, adding the Assistant Chief, that, that we do have savings on that part? That's when the commander pay schedule comes in. How do we know what the pay schedule for that is? Would that continue our savings? Because I see four or five people that will become commanders. What is their pay schedule, and how do we know it will continue to save us money? We don't even have that listed here yet.
Yeah, let me, let me just also say, and that, also reminder, Councilmember, that the commanders will be at a, they're on a salary, so there won't be any overtime. And I know that the chief has mentioned before, these commanders will most likely be used out during various types of special events throughout the city, and once again, there's no overtime. So that's the area we're going to literally save.
Right, but it still doesn't give me a number as a salary, so I can get an idea in my head what the salary that we're gonna be spending on these commanders. Again, I don't know if they're gonna have to test to be a commander, how we're gonna put these positions in places. So that's what I'm not understanding. I'm not against reorganizing our police department, and by all means, I'm not against saving money. We do need to do that, but I'd like to understand, before we move forward with anything or actually hiring the person, I want to make sure that we're clear on exactly the dollar amounts because once we get an Assistant Chief of Police, the rest is gonna fall in place. Then we need to get the commanders, and then we need to put it, then we need to get corporals that we normally don't have. I want to see the cost once everything's in place, and it gives me a bigger picture. It gives the community a better picture of what it is exactly that we're spending money on and what the total saving would be once we do this organization.
We, we will have all of the information on commanders and lieutenants for you in two weeks. If it's the council's pleasure, you could approve item six tonight and move that ahead, and you could bring, if the council wants to bring back number seven, and bring that back in two weeks with all of the commander information, that's certainly an option.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem moving forward with item six. And again, just so we can be transparent, again, we want to save the city money, definitely, and I appreciate the chief working on this and making sure this is all put together for us. But if we have a bigger picture of the community that's listening, they can hear exactly the cost savings. How much our commanders will cost us? How much it's going to cost us to have a corporal? Where are we getting our commanders? What the process is? So we can have that all in place, and we can all have a better understanding. I would truly appreciate that. So I'm not in, I would definitely favor on passing item six, but I would like to see more information in order to continue for item seven.
Mr. Mayor?
My motion.
Vice Mayor, hold on, Vice Mayor Hernandez, sorry about that. Go ahead, yes, sir.
Thank you. No, Councilmember Alejandra has many good points. You know, I would ask that, you know, we, she, we all receive those, you know, all those answers. You know, I think what we are doing today is just beginning the process in which we are doing the administrative piece of having these positions established, you know, in our books. It does not mean that we are actually going to hire anyone or change any type of deployment or classifications at this moment or anytime soon. As I understand it, there still has to, we still have to go through a process of negotiations with the police unions and associations. So what I would ask, you know, also is, you know, if we could, you know, if we could all receive the questions that Councilmember Alejandra Avila asked for, you know, in a timely manner, but at the same time, we can currently move item six and seven as is, as, as stated.
Right.
Because that's...
Sorry about that, so is that a motion?
Mayor?
That's, hold on, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
So, okay, so, yes, exactly, we need to get clarification. Again, I'm not against the items at all. Before we move forward, we continue, because this is the way our community sees it, and this is the way I see it. Once we move item forwards, we all know it's ready to get voted on the next time we have a meeting. Let's give everybody the benefit of the doubt that we're definitely letting them in on the loop. It gives them time to ask questions for the next meeting and submit it to our City Clerk. Once all those questions are in, once we have the numbers, then we move forward for item seven. I don't have a problem with, again, moving item six at this time. And one more thing with that item, I know it says, well, this is item seven. It says that they talked to the POA, and, but I don't see what those conversations were like, what they had to say, how they feel about it. I would like all that information in place before, and I know, Councilmember Hernandez, I know it doesn't mean we're going to go ahead and move to hire somebody. It's just setting everything up. I understand that. I just want to make sure that we are transparent when we continue to move forward with item seven. I just say, let's do item six, move forward with that. It gives us a little room to continue to study all the items that I requested, and the community can look at it, can ask questions. I would like to hear the comments that the POA had to, had to give when this was presented to them because I honestly have asked a few police officers, and they had no knowledge. They weren't asked anything. So I would like more information up in front before we continue with item seven. Again, my motion is...
Real quick, another, let me just ask one question. Correct me, Shannon. Isn't this a management level, a meeting confer, and not the rank and file? Am I correct on that? Am I wrong?
Correct, and it's not a negotiation. It's, we call it a meet and confer. We basically met with the management group, and we let them know what was going on. And of course, the chief had given a PowerPoint presentation that was also given to them. So they had some questions, they had some concerns, mainly about the current person that is in the captain's position, just wanting to make sure that they weren't demoted. And, and our thought was that, you know, that person would stay in their place, and that that position would be eventually grandfathered out as people leave and as new people come in. And so the, and so the, if, this is really more of a process of, it's not a negotiation. It's just informing them of what's going on. It's, it's just sort of a courtesy notification of what's going on and, you know, and accepting any comments they have. And again, I just want to point out that, you know, item six does not take effect for thirty days, so we'll probably have at least maybe two more meetings before anybody could be hired into that position. Although, we might start the advertisement process if these pass tonight, just so to get a jump on it.
Yes, let me ask, so is this, this is a management right? Am I correct?
This is a management right. This will be an at-will position, an at-will and management position.
Okay, all right, so at this point, is there a motion, I believe, Vice Mayor?
The chief, this Chief McLean is, with all due respect, Maryne, I can answer some questions if it's appropriate.
No, at this point, we're gonna move forward. So Vice Mayor, go ahead and make, you got the motion?
I believe Councilmember Alejandra had made a motion before me, if I'm correct.
Wait, now go ahead and second? Oh, Alejandra's second?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I ask what the, what the, what Councilmember Alejandra's motion was?
Alejandra was basically wanting additional information, I guess, getting input from the POA in general, but at this...
No.
No?
No. So my motion was... Mayor, I think that Paul Hernandez, Councilmember Paul, or Vice Mayor Paul Hernandez can make the substitute motion.
Okay, so is it, Vice Mayor, you're doing a substitute motion?
Mayor, may I, please?
Hold on, hold on.
If the chief has something to say, I would like to hear what he has to say, please.
At this point, we're gonna move forward. Go ahead.
Now we have the chief speak.
But, hold on, do not interrupt. Hold on, let's go with this. Vice Mayor, are you there?
I am, sir.
Okay, go ahead with the motion.
I made the motion first, Mayor.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
What was the motion? Go ahead.
My motion was to move forward with item six and to bring back item seven once we have the information that I requested. However, chief says he may answer some of the questions for me, and you're not allowing him to answer.
I think those questions were answered, or chief, what, what additional information do you have?
Chief? Sir, the only thing I wanted to say is, just, I just heard a presentation where we're getting, we have a potential to be four-million-dollar deficit. And if there was ever a time to save money, this proposal accomplishes that goal. The last several years, based on the amount of overtime that lieutenants have made, well over two-hundred-thousand dollars each. By making them salary employees, giving them a raise at the salary of a hundred and fifty-five-thousand dollars, taking the second captain position, making another lieutenant, converting them to commanders, nobody loses their job. In fact, they get a pay raise. The lieutenants not only get a pay raise, they become commanders. But in the next five years, with this proposal, this reorganization, we can save up to one-point-four-million dollars and at the same time, have better spending control, finally do what we should have done decades ago, and that's mentor and develop our next generations of leaders. And this proposal does that. The last thing I'll say is, in the last twelve months, we've lost thirteen employees, accumulation of over two-hundred years' experience. And that includes two captains that are gone, and all that experience is gone. The most experienced lieutenant we have right now has six years. And so this is an opportunity, not only to develop the next generation of leaders, like I said, but, but bring in someone that has the experience to support me in the, in the things that I want to accomplish in reorganizing this police department. So all those goals get accomplished at the same time, save a lot of money.
Thank you, Chief, and I do see the savings that you're talking about. And like I said, I appreciate that you've done all this work and you've put all this in place. I'm just simply asking, Shannon did mention for item six, once passed, it's gonna take thirty days. I'm just simply asking, Shannon did mention for item six, once passed, it's going to take 30 days to take into effect. So in the meantime, why not have the rest of the information? Before that, we're going to have another meeting where we can set item seven on there, and by then I have the full information and everybody's informed on what I was asking for. Question, Shannon, once item seven is passed, is there a period we have to wait, or is it automatic?
Well, since item six and seven go together, we couldn't complete hiring of an assistant chief until item six is in effect, which would be 30 days from tonight.
And if we just do item six and wait for item seven, and we approve item seven in two weeks, is that effective immediately?
Yes.
So that's, that's all I'm asking, simply, let's approve item six, it gives us the 30 days that we need anyways. In two weeks, we have another meeting, we have the digits that I'm asking for, the information. Item seven's back on the agenda, and we move forward from there.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilmember, at this point, Vice Mayor Hernandez, yes, sir.
Thank you again, I'd just like to make a substitute motion that we adopt items six and seven and move forward. And with the caveat that staff provide the necessary answers and information to all the council members that Councilmember Avila has asked for.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second the motion, there's a substitute on the floor by Vice Mayor Hernandez, and I'll go ahead and second, at this point, the city clerk will take real call. Ms. Gina Yala.
Mayor Pro Tem, Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Emmanuel Lozano.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
No.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, before I get my answer, I know that a few meetings ago, when the chief gave his presentation, he laid out the position, the definition of the job description, the salary that was going to be paid, which was somewhere between the lieutenant and the captain. So there was a lot of transparency that was given at that meeting. But one thing that wasn't transparent is, some of the lieutenants were charging overtime, or there was a way that they could do it, that literally doubled their salary. And they were making, as the chief said, something like $250,000 each. That was a lot of money, and I think, in talking to the chief at that meeting, he talked about how the tremendous amount of money we would save by making these changes, so. And I think we have a couple of more meetings where we could continue to discuss those issues. But Chief, I think you ought to bring up the cost savings that we would make from these overtimes that were being done by some of our officers, to let the community know that why we're doing this change and how much it would save us. So I'm going to vote yes.
All right, all right, thank you very much, and Chief, you could bring those back to the following meeting. So at this point, the motion is four zero, we're sending vote by Councilmember Avila, all right.
And Mayor, just to make it clear, I definitely am in agreement with the chief saving us money and moving forward to try to do so. I just wanted more clarification before I moved on to item seven. I did not have a problem just passing item six for the, for the moment, but I just wanted to make sure that is on the record, thank you.
And what's on the record as well, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Hernandez had requested that everyone's questions also be brought back as well and answered. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to number eight, which is requested by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, approval of the contract and associate to provide the consulting services to update downtown. So at this point, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, I'd like to bring this back during the budget session, that has some of the money that comes from the, I know it's a general fund money in a special account, but I'd still want to hold it off as we looked at the whole budget, and also the, I think it refers to the, it's item eight, the, the specific plan, so I want to, things have changed, and I'd like to take a look as far as the economic outlook of the community. So I'd just like to also take a look at the T O D specific plan before we decide to vote on this. If it could come back during the budget session, I'd appreciate it, thank you. So that's my motion, get back.
Who's in the background?
I'm sorry, if I, if I could, Mayor, this item is time sensitive. This is an S B two grant, there's no general funds involved. And if it's not moved upon quickly, we'll probably lose the grant funding.
But isn't it, it does say that it's a general, a general fund plan fees? There's $42,806 from Fund Number Two Three Five, was that general money, or was that?
That's, that's correct, but that is not, it's a little bit confusing, because it sounds like a general fund amount. But it's a general plan fee, it's something that's collected when people apply to their planning grants or their planning applications, and it is restricted funds and can only be used for these type of uses.
Well, how much time do we have? When you say time sensitive, how much time are we looking at?
I think, I think we could hold it over two weeks. Ben or Ron, if you could chime in, if we have another two weeks on this, or if it needs to be considered tonight.
Go ahead.
Pacheco, Ron Garcia, the city planner, yes, this item is time sensitive, it is an S B two grant. This grant has to be completed, we have to have it to H C D in order for us to receive the entire amount of the grant, otherwise we would have to pay out, the city would have to pay for it. We have a scheduled date that we have to get it before June of 2021. So I know that seems like it's next year, but based on the amount of work required for this, this update, it's really key and important that we move this grant along, because otherwise we would lose the funding.
Okay, let's move it over two weeks, let me just take a look at it a little more, I'll talk to staff.
I'll go ahead and second, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco's request, are there any objections? See none, so move. At this point, we're going to go back to the consent calendar, the city clerk has just told me we need to make certain for the record that we pass items four, one to four, and nine and 10. So that is my motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hernandez, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so now we'll go to the public hearing, we have the item in which is conducted, public hearing and consider adoption of resolution number two oh, two oh two dash zero one five, a resolution of the City Council in the City of Ballpark, California, awarding an energy service contract for energy efficiency improvement to city-owned streetlights and traffic signal lighting to Tanco Street Lighting, Inc. So at this point, I'll open up the public hearing, how are we doing that legal counsel, the public hearing?
Mayor, do we, I know at one time we had a line where people could call in. If not, then it, then it's through the email, they would email and say that they want to be heard on the public hearing.
Okay, I'll, one moment, allow me to ask, the city, the city clerk, has, have we received any notice of the public hearing or any information? She has indicated, we have not received any, any, any input for the public hearing. So at this point, I will now, well. Yes, sir.
Open up the public.
Yes. All right, so at this point, I will open up the public hearing. The city clerk, Ms. Gina M. Igalas, has indicated that there is no one that has sent information regarding, regarding this, the public hearing. So at this point, I will not close the public hearing, I'll go ahead and make a motion. The, let me see, the resolution number 2020 dash zero one five, entirely a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ballpark, California, awarding an energy service. Lights and traffic signal lighting, the Tanco Street Lighting, Inc., that is my motion, there's second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hernandez, any objections? See none, so move. We'll go to item 12, which is the public hearing regarding five-year consolidated plan fiscal year 2020 and 2021, annual action plan, citizen participation plan, and analysis of impairment to the fair housing choice. Who's handling this, or can I make a motion?
Mayor, and just, just so you know, so we have the two public hearings tonight. Number 13 is the urgent item, that's the COVID funding. Item, item that you're considering now, item 12, is just the general five-year plan. The direction from HUD at this point has been to continue as we have in the past, and there's going to be information coming out soon on how the city may be able to divert any of these funds to additional COVID response. And then Ben and his staff are here, if you have any other questions, or if they want to add any comments.
Do I open up the public hearing?
Yes, please.
At this point, I will open up the public hearing, I will. Am I Yala, do we have any, has anyone turned in anything regarding this public hearing?
No.
Okay, the city clerk has just indicated to me that no one has turned in any type of document for the public hearing. So at this point, I will not close the public hearing, that is my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hernandez, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so item 13, which is, go ahead, Shannon, remind me, which is the V I D A medical service?
No.
Mayor, we also have the successor agency consent calendar items S A one and S A two, if you'd like to.
Yeah, let me go ahead and, go ahead, yes.
On item number 12, you opened up the public hearing and closed it, but we still need to approve the five-year consolidated plan, the analysis, and the citizen participation plan.
All right, so let me go ahead and, go ahead and make the motion for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2024, five-year consolidated plan and fiscal year 20, 2020, 21, annual action plan, to analysis of impairment to fair housing choice and the system participation plan, that's my motion. And I believe the Vice Mayor had, had also made a second it, and there was no objections. Okay? All right, we're going to go down to the successor agency, we have S A dash one and S A dash two. I'll go ahead and make a, make approval of both the successor agency to dissolve community development commission of the City of Ballpark warrants and demands, and also S A two, which is a successor agency to dissolve community development commission of the City of Ballpark's treasure report, February 2020, that is my motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor, any objections? See none, so move. All right, the next one, item 13, which is the fiscal year 2019, 2020, community development black grant, coronavirus C D B G dash C V, staff recommends the city council approve the C D B G dash C V cares act and allocations for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, C D B G public program by selecting one of the following options. One, approved funding as recommended, two, revised allocation as city council deems appropriate. Are we doing both one and two, or two?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Can I add something to that, please? So I'm looking at the report, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I should clarify, because there was a subsequent revised report that, that was sent out to everybody earlier today. And it just, it changed and updated the wording to that a little bit. I'm also trying to pull that up, and I can read that information.
Is it the one dated today, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor.
Shannon, I'd be happy to go through it.
Hold on, Councilmember Ricardo, go ahead.
There's changes, I'd like to see this, I would like to see this moved to next week. If there was information that was revised and we didn't see it.
Mayor, I still have some comments about.
Yes, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, so I see the excellent work that you put together here, allocating the money so that we can help our residents, especially for the food bank. I'm looking at that, that the city staff reached out to the Church of the Redeemer, and it lists here how many baskets it gets, 200 baskets and the cost, requesting a total of $15,000. And it's also, it extends the above information for food assistance from three months to approximately 12 months for 48,000 meals. I also see that we're providing senior meal delivery services. I would actually like to include on this, St. John the Baptist, they're providing food for 100 families, and they need, in order for them to continue for six, excuse me, six weeks, they would need about $3,000, that way we have more people in the loop providing food for our families. We can have Church of the Redeemer, maybe reduce them, their 12 months to less months, and then add six more weeks to St. John's, so they can feed 100 more families for $3,000. So I would need this, this change on this, so we can have more benefit from it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, no, I certainly agree with Councilmember Avila's inclusion of another location. The one thing I'd also ask for us to consider is removing, excuse me, reallocating $15,000 from the food voucher program and allocate that to the senior meal delivery program. So that would, that would increase the city, the city's senior meal program to, from 140 to 250, at a new cost of $23,400, if my math is correct. I believe that will assist our, you know, one of our most vulnerable populations, which is our seniors, and we're also trying to ensure, you know, that they stay home as much as possible. From my understanding, speaking with Mr. Manny Correio, there is still a need there, and we still have the capacity to increase the number of meals that we're doing from 150 to a total of three, excuse me, it'd be 400, I believe, 400 meals for our senior delivery program.
Interesting. That sounds good, is that a motion?
That is my motion.
Okay, there's a motion, I'll second, any objections?
Well, Mayor, I mean.
Mayor, are we including St. John's also, like I asked, for the 3,000 to feed 100 more families? That would, I would like to add that to that.
Yes, I have no problem with that, Mayor, so if we want to pull an additional 3,000 from the food voucher program, so that the New Balance there would be $82,000, and add that to the St. John's feeding efforts, that sounds terrific.
Absolutely.
Mayor, Mayor, can we have St. John's at 5,000, just take 2,000 more for the same account?
Well, that, that won't hurt, I mean, St. John goes out of, let's go do the 5,000.
All right.
And we're pulling that from the food voucher program?
Yes.
That's even better, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, it sounds good, people.
Second the motion.
Okay, so, hold on, the Vice Mayor Hernandez made the motion seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Are there any objections? See none, so move, all righty.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is Ben Martinez.
Ben, yes, sir.
If I can just clarify, Mr. Mayor, this item was originally a report of officers. So we, we had to, because of several waivers that HUD is just, was just releasing late last week, that's why we made this a public hearing item. So I would ask if you could that we actually hold the public hearing for this item as well.
Okay.
And see if we receive any comment, and then, and then with the, with the, with the additions that you've done, with the council members have made the other motions, I understand, and I have enough to, to move forward with the direction for this coronavirus C D B G funding. But I, I don't think we held the public hearing and we need to do that.
Let's go, okay, so thank you very much, I appreciate that. So at this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, so I will ask the city clerk, Ms. Gina M. Igalas, have we received any type of notices or documents regarding this hearing?
None.
She has reported none, so at this point, there was a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, and there was no objection. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff and communication. We have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, discussion and directions to staff regarding the Ballpark COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Response Plan, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor, the reason I bring this up is, as we begin to look at the situation that we have with the coronavirus, it's, it's going to be a, a long time before we get things back to normal, if they ever do. And we need to position ourselves, our community, our residents, and our businesses in a position where they're going to be receiving a plan that we could put together so that everybody can retake some of the benefits that our, the government is going to be placing out there. And we need to have a plan that our city can offer the community that will allow them to take advantage of what the federal government has to offer, what the state has to offer, what our county has to offer. to take advantage of what the, the federal government has to offer, what the state has to offer, what our county has to offer and locally here. There's a lot of agencies that offer, are going to be offering a lot of different types of help. But we need a hub where we can have all this information in one place and begin to help our local businesses to get back on their feet. When you look at the governor's plan, he has a six-point plan. And one of them is for businesses, he wants to have customers spaced out six feet apart. Well, that's going to make ma- major architectural changes for any res, any restaurant. You're going to have to sit people somehow six feet apart. It's going to be costly. I mean, he doesn't, they don't say that, but it will be costly, whatever changes there. The schools are going to be changing different, students have to be six feet apart. How is that going to happen? Are we going to go online or are we going to do it, you know, two different sessions of, of classes? So we, you know, and there's just a lot of impact of what the future is going to bring. And I think we have to put together a plan on the website. We have staff ready to help our local businesses to put a plan together to get back on their feet. Whether it's loans up their lead, grants that they can apply for, we just need to be with our community development department and all our city staff to come up with some new plans and some new ideas to be able to, to have that. So I'd like to ask for a motion that the, that we establish a ballpark COVID-19 economic response plan. Doesn't have to be by the next meeting or the next two, maybe a plan that we can have put in place within the next, say, you know, six to 10 weeks, that staff can come back with a report, at least begin to bring back together the initial planning stages of what we can do to help our community get back on our feet. You know, our, our business, sales tax and the number of revenue that we get from our local businesses is going to be coming down. So we need to, to help them to get back on their feet. And I think that this is something that we need to, to work on. I, I would like it to include things like for our residents, better information about childcare benefits, mortgage and payment furloughs or, or holding off on, on payments for rent, same thing for our businesses. And of course, I know we, we've talked about no evictions and no foreclosures, but we might need to extend that beyond. And if we could look at healthcare insurance for those that don't have any, how can we support them better so they receive that, that healthcare that they need? Also support for women's shelters and sexual assault centers that we need to make sure that they're properly running out there. So I'd do more support for our working families and our businesses that are out there. And so that's what I ask, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. That, very well, we'll follow up with that as well. Councilmembers, anyone else wishing to share any items before we close the meeting? We're going to go to the public, well, prior to that, yes, go ahead, yes, vice mayor?
No, I just want to take this opportunity to thank staff for everything that they've been doing over the last several weeks, but even the last, even five days or seven days, you know, from our park and recs, from Sam to, sorry, from our public works, from Sam Icaeteras and his staff that have been out there during the days, in the mornings, weekends, and so forth, helping set up the COVID testing along with our chief and his staff, you know, working, coordinating, providing security. And of course, our wreck and park staff through Manny Carrillo's leadership and all that's been happening there, not only on that, but also on the feeding efforts that we are, that have been discussing. And again, you know, you know, with Shannon, you know, we've all been texting him and calling him several times. So, you know, he's, he certainly has a handful and, you know, with all due respect, he has been an extraordinary, extraordinary leader during this time. And I just wanted to at least take this opportunity to thank them all publicly.
I, I agree. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Uh, thank you. I just want to say, I, I want to thank the mayor, Daniel, Officer Izzo, Shannon, Manny, everybody that has, like we say, boots on the ground, putting this program together. I was up there on, on Monday, I got a walkthrough of all the setup and how perfectly well they, they set up the COVID testing. And then on, on Tuesday, I went out there when they were actually testing our residents there. And, and I felt so proud to see all the work and effort everybody has put to be able to, to provide for our residents. And I'm sure all these residents that have been tested and received wonderful news feel a lot better down, knowing that, that they are okay. So I want to thank everybody that has been involved putting this COVID testing up. But I know that Daniel Rodriguez and the chief and Izzo and Shannon have been working 24/7, as well as Manny Carrillo. I saw Helen out there on Monday and all the staff from Parks and Recreation, from grounds, everybody. So again, thank you for this. I truly appreciate it. And I'm sure our residents appreciate it as well. I'm happy to be moving forward with this and I can't wait till the day comes that we could say we did this and, and we got through it. So thank you, everybody.
Yes, and I, I just want to add to those words. Let me, allow me to thank all the people that you just shared. And I'll also want to acknowledge the vice mayor Hernandez, council member Alejandro Avila, council member Monica Garcia, council member Ricardo Pacheco, because we too ourselves have taken a lot and we're part of that same team that has moved and, and has been enthusiastic about making certain that our residents are all doing good because that's the word out in the community that we're putting up at the front. And it's important for all of us to acknowledge each and every one of us as well. So I want to thank everyone. But on that note, yes, vice mayor. Yes, also, far forget, I, I'll hold on, I have, I have our city treasurer, Marie Contreras. Before I forget, it also includes the treasurer and the city clerk.
I just want to let everybody know how proud I am to be part of your city, how proud I am of you council people of taking control and informing people and really caring, reaching out to the residents, looking out for avenues to take care of everybody. I am not in Baldwin Park right now, but you know, it's just, I'm, I'm like a air hug for all of you guys. And I really think.
Hello?
Mr. Mayor?
We lost Marie. Hello? Anybody there?
We are here. So we'll take this opportunity while we can. Pardon the, the technology, I think we have the mayor back on, but I'll just take this moment again. The one, the one organization I did not thank was the Baldwin, Baldwin Park Unified School District. You know, without them, we would not be able to be doing the testing that we're doing at their facility. And, you know, this is a collaborative effort between the city, the school district and their board of directors and their leadership and of course, the superintendent. So I want to thank them. You know, I, I would be almost submissive if I forgot to do that and shame on me. So I just want to say thank you all for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, vice, excuse me, council.
Yes, I, I just also wanted to thank staff for all of your hard work and just for moving so swiftly. I know that we were, you know, we were actually in the planning stages, what was it? I want to say less than two weeks ago or two weeks ago and, and look at what we have now in the community. And it's all because of the, the behind the scenes efforts that you guys put into this and the day-to-day efforts. And I know that some of you are working, you know, day and night and working off of fumes right now. And I just really want to say thank you for just being such a top-notch team. I know there have been little bumps in, along the way, but you know, as a team, I think that we've all, we've, we've overcome any little hurdles and it just is a testament to the will here, you know, to serve the community and just the collaboration and, and the willingness to put our heads together and to figure these things out. So I, I really want to take, take the opportunity to thank staff from Shannon to our executive team, to, you know, the staff across the, the department and including the police department, of course, who, you know, who just really jumped to the occasion and have been going above and beyond. So thank you so much, really appreciated for, on behalf of our residents. And I, I know that in sending out the information to residents, they were very appreciative that we were offering the COVID testing site and, you know, also the, the food options and the food bank and the hotline that we're offering. I've already, you know, been able to provide that information to residents who have been very appreciative. So want to say thank you.
Mayor, one more thing, sorry.
Good, council member Alejandro Avila.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez. And I definitely also want to thank the, the school board members and the school district. I actually ran into Dr. Mendoza on Tuesday, and I know he's been there from the start. He goes out there to be at the actual site. I know Christina Lucero was also there on Tuesday. So the Baldwin Park Unified School District has been amazing. We've been receiving, receiving all the robocalls from them advising residents that we do have the COVID testing. So thank you, Baldwin Park Unified School District.
Awesome, thank you, thank you very much. Right, so.
Mayor, just real quick, I know there's, there's a lot of people to thank. I also wanted to thank the legal team, Robert Tofoi and all those people. I know they were working hard. I gave a lot of the reports out and a lot of stuff. I, I called them a couple of times and they were really trying to get out the emergency orders and get all the things that they do to get our meetings ready. So I wanted to thank them also, right? Special kudos to those guys, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, Mr.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could, Shannon Yahtzee, I want to thank the council for your leadership and the great ideas that you've given us to carry out. We appreciate that and we appreciate your thanks. I want to especially thank all of our staff, everybody from the police department, the police chief, facilities maintenance, parks and rec finance, housing and IT, everybody's really come together and, you know, worked at odd hours, worked on days off and really put everything together. So I just want to thank the council for the leadership and thank staff for their support.
Awesome, thank you very much. I'll be, I'll be very quick on mine. Chief, what if we could organize what other cities are doing for Kaiser, where we have the police department and the fire department paying tribute to the first responders over at Kaiser? I don't know if you guys have seen that on TV or Chief? I don't know what the description is.
Sir, actually, we are doing that tomorrow.
Wow.
We are, we are leading multiple police departments and we're leading a caravan to the hospital and we'll go through red lights and sirens through the hospital, then we will stop, turn off our sirens and we will show our respect to the hospital at 12:30. But we expect a big showing, not only with the fire department, the Baldwin Police Department leading it, but Irwindale and other police departments who are going to join us in that recognition of, of all the medical and everyone that works at Kaiser's. That will go tomorrow at 12:30.
At 12:30, okay, all righty. All right, thank you very much, Chief, for doing that. So at that point, at this point, I'd like to move for, we're going to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Any, one moment, do we have any public communications? So I will refer over to the, the city clerk. Did we receive anyone that wish it was wishing to share any information in the public communication?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay, here, the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We've received two. The first one reads, I would like to have this comment read, Diane Velez, Baldwin Park resident. I would like to thank the Baldwin Park Recreation Department for quickly utilizing social media, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook and Net Next Door to release bilingual city information as COVID-19 evolves. I want to encourage all council members to do the same on their accounts as residents need to receive the same information from different sources. Additionally, I want to commend the city's school district and vital medical services for mobilizing and providing COVID-19 testing for residents. Data collected will not only help those who result in positive cases, but provide the city with a better understanding of how to prepare for future emergencies. Thank you. And that was from resident Diane Velez. Our second one that I'll be reading is, excuse me, this is submitted by Terry Muse, Public Sector Solutions Representative for the San Gabriel Valley area for Waste Management. Waste Management would like to thank all the residents who have been waving and saying hello and thank you to our drivers every Friday during the COVID-19 shelter at home mandate. We understand that in these uncertain times, it's important for people to feel some sense of normalcy, like getting their trash picked up as usual. We want to reassure the residents of Baldwin Park that we are here for you through these trying times. With everyone stuck at home, there is a lot of spring cleaning going on. We want to remind you that Baldwin Park residents enjoy free bulky item pickup every Friday. Just call these following numbers, 1-800-266-7551, or go to WM.com to schedule your pickup. Also, Waste Management is now accepting applications for the 2020 Waste Management Internship and Scholarship Program. Interested high school students can go to the city website and find the applications on the Waste Management section under utilities. Both programs award up to $2,500 each. The deadline for applications is May 22nd. Thank you again, submitted by Terry Muse, Public Sector Solutions Rep for the San Gabriel area of Waste Management.
All right.
Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you very much, council members. At this point, I will go ahead and move for German and the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, vice mayor.
Sorry, one last recognition. Again, I like to make sure that we thank our folks and our colleagues over with the Valley County Water District. I know that they've been working and supporting the feeding efforts over with the school district as, as well as our wreck and park, wreck and park staff. So I just want to thank them for their incredible leadership and efforts that they're doing during this period of time.
All righty, so at this point, we'll move for German. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Housing Authority, which is a consent calendar items one and two. The, this, the treasures report and the ballpark housing authority warrants and demands. That is my motion.
Second.
Second by, by council member Monica Garcia. Any objections? See none, so move. This one, I'd like to move for German of the Housing Authority. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See none, so move. This point, let's open up the Finance Authority. Go ahead and move for Consent Calendar. That is my motion.
Second.
By Councilman Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, I'd like to move for a German of the Finance Authority. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? If not, at this point, hold on, one, before I adjourn, the legal counsel just sent me something. Want to make sure. All right, yeah, something that I need to ask real quick before we adjourn. One moment, please. Thank you, legal counsel, for that reminder. Where's the paint part? Bear with me, thank you. All right, so before we move to a German of the, the finance, the councils are members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional type of $30 for attending the Housing Authority, meaning, and a $50 for attending the Finance Authority. All right, so we read that for the record. So at this point, I will move for a German of the Finance Authority. That is my motion.
Second.
The second by Councilman Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, good evening, viva Baldwin Park, be safe and don't forget to wear your mask. Thank you, Marie.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Be safe.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Oh, my gosh.
Good night, Marie. Bye-bye now. You're welcome, bye-bye.